Alright, we're gonna begin with the mayor. Spencer, this is one of our Tars, just come next to us.
I really applaud the having come here to this debate. Please let's that, um, the speakers will do well and others, uh, all talking. Please let's that we will listen and give our support when time comes. And, um, please let's that the speaker will preside in this room and we will all feel it and we will keep it in our hearts and say things in your discretion.
Alright, we will now have our pledge allegiance, which will be led by the judge.
Please follow me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so first I want to introduce myself. My name is Rosalie Haley. I am the chair of the Davis County Tars and the state Tars. I'm just going to thank you all for coming out here. Great. Um, this debate is Tars sponsored event, so the Tars kids and the advisors who, we couldn't have done this without, which is Mrs. Levi and Mrs. Wilson. They are two great advisors. Oh yes, and my mom, she's an advisor. So, um, we just want to thank them and Tars has put us on. So we have, we have concessions and flyers to help support Tars and so we're really excited to host this. Um, we also really want to thank the candidates for all showing up and working through this, kind of, a big thing to put on. So we're really thankful for all the candidates and the work they've done. Um, and we also want to thank Ken Helwell, he is our moderator, he's going to be presiding over this debate. So, we're really excited about that. And, um, another order of business is just, if you could make sure all your cell phones are off, if you don't mind, because we're in the middle of the debate. Alright, so let's begin.
Okay, the, the format for the mayor debate tonight will be, um, alternating questions. Each of you had an opportunity to answer a question and then each of you also an opportunity for a rebuttal or above. The question will be, the question will have been, it'll have two and a half minutes for the question, to ask the question, and one minute for the rebuttal. Any questions? Hopefully each other will think of the ground rules and try to get questions on those. Um, also at the end, will be, prior to the completion of the debate and your closing remarks, there'll be an opportunity for each of you to ask each other one question. So, um, try that format tonight. Yeah, we have our opening statements first. Yes. Yeah, we have opening statements first. Um, we'll start with Mr. Palmer for opening statements and you have two minutes for your opening statement and then Mr. Peterson, you'll follow with two minutes of your opening statement. The timekeepers are over here, they'll hold up signs giving you some, um, warning of where you're at time wise.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody that is here tonight. I'm also very appreciative of the Tars and the great professionalism that they used last time and continue this, this week, so I appreciate that. I'd like to start out by, uh, in 1985, December 31st, I found myself, um, sitting in my office because I just had heard from my partner, who I have in three businesses, he told me that he was stepping out and, uh, filing bankruptcy. This was a pretty tough day for me because we had quite a bit of debt in the business and it put me behind the eight ball. I actually found myself to, uh, to where I had an extra $2,000 within bills or what I had in income. Not a good sign. Then, not as I sat there, I, I took a look at both ends of the spectrum, where could I cut expenses? And at the same time, where could I increase my income? I realized that I had a couple pieces of real estate, if I were to sell those, that would help me out on the, kind of, the expenses. On the other side, I looked at myself and where I can increase. So, after five hours, I had worked out a plan. At the end of the year, I set that down, December 31st, 1986, and I realized all of my goals, except I did not sell one piece of real estate. More importantly, I had solved my financial problem and at the same time, I had grown strong, physically responsible, and I had learned how to run a business very well. I can take those same qualities and put it into mayor position here. Thank you.
Well, good evening. I too would like to thank the Tars for their work in, in putting this on. Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Doug Peterson. I was raised here in Syracuse and, uh, I'm married to Stephanie, we have three children. My career is as an educator. I've been a teacher, uh, for 15 years and now am currently an administrator in a junior high school. I, I would describe myself to you as somebody who is honest, intelligent, hardworking, and family oriented, and I think those are just a few of the values that I bring to this position. You know, every day in my career as a principal, I deal with many of the same things that I would deal with as a mayor. Angry people, different opinions, um, budgets, um, vision, goals, and my everyday experience in my career prepares me for this position. Another thing that I feel like really prepares me and sets me apart is my experience on the city council. I've spent almost six years, a term and a half, on the city council and during that time, uh, it's quite a learning curve and during that time I've been able to learn about budgets, processes, ordinances, laws, and I've, I've learned to reach the department within our city and gain the respect of the different employees that we have here in the city. So I think that I'm prepared through not only, uh, my career but my time on the city council to now move forward and serve as the mayor of Syracuse. Thank you.
Thank you both of you. These questions and also for the city council members who asked tonight were all submitted previously by Syracuse residents to the Tars and they just gave me a list and said pick a few questions. All these questions were submitted by, by citizens. The first question is, and we'll start with, with Mr. Palmer with this one, although Mr. Palmer and Mr. Peterson have a chance to answer, then rebuttal from Mr. Palmer and rebuttal from Mr. Peterson. The first question is, what do you propose to do to stabilize the city's tax base and what would you do to attract more sales tax paying businesses to Syracuse? This will be a two and a half minute question for each of you and a one minute rebuttal.
In stabilizing our tax base, you know, I would set it up to where at this point in time, there would be no new taxes. I mean, I've fought for that for the last, uh, three years in not raising the taxes. How would, uh, how would raising taxes increase our revenues in the city? In reality, Ronald Reagan found out that when you lower taxes, that's actually how, how actually increased income comes in by lowering the taxes. Sales tax, the best thing that we can do in the city in reality is to have businesses moving into our, our center here in Syracuse. We need to have the landlords in there, lower the rents, work on the rents so that people can, businesses can come in. A competitor of mine, American Family Insurance, moved in there, forty-two hundred bucks a month for fifteen hundred square feet. My business is eighteen hundred bucks, or eighteen hundred square feet, cost me ninety hundred and seventy bucks a month. You know, that forty-two hundred is, is catastrophic for people who move into the city. So I would work with the existing landlords, I would work with the existing businesses if we can bring businesses in. I would love to see a restaurant coming here, but at this point in time, it's space, it's the number of citizens that we have. But if we can get our citizens to go to Arby's, go to Iceberg, go to Wendy's, McDonald's, all the existing places here, let's spend our money here, let's show that, show that the existing businesses can succeed. With my experience and work with Delphine, I believe that I can work with existing businesses and at the same time, I would take one of our finance people and I would put down fifty-six percent of the time talking with businesses outside of the city and get them to bring in their business in the air. Thank you.
Similar to Mr. Palmer, uh, the way to increase our tax base is not through property taxes. Nobody wants their taxes raised and we haven't, as long as I've been on council, the taxes have not been raised. And so, my goal is to continue, to continue with the rate that we have right now for our property taxes. The other part, the lion's share of taxes is sales tax. And so that is our businesses. One of the things that I think needs to, to happen is we've got a group that, that's kind of started as grassroots business group, sort of the Chamber of Commerce, if you will, of Syracuse, and it's called SPOS. And, uh, it's a group of business owners and representatives from around the city who have, have tried to bolster business within the city. I think we need to devote more time and energy and resources as a city to support that group because, uh, the ideas that they have, they're business owners and they, they have the ideas and we just need to support them. Another thing is that we, we have, there are vagabonds amongst, at all, but many developers for not being developed for friendly city. And so, we've tried to fix that step by step, but there are more things that need to be done. We need, in some cases, it will be to change policies or ordinances, um, in some cases it will be to, to, uh, to just be friendlier, put on a friendlier face as a council and staff. One of the things that Mr. Palmer mentioned I agree with and we've done this for the first time, and that is send one of our employees out to recruit new businesses. Something I hear all the time is from people, we want a restaurant. And so the last thing that I'll just put up there is that, in order to have restaurants, those developers tell us that we need to have a daytime population. So we need to have development within the city that also brings jobs. Because if people drag out manolo drive to go to work, they're not going to eat lunch or shop during the day here in Syracuse. But if they work here in Syracuse, then we have the opportunity to keep them here and then I believe we have developers that would build restaurants for us. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer, Mr. Peterson, rebuttal.
So when it comes to, uh, property taxes, uh, Councilman Peterson here forgot to mention that he supported the increase on those property taxes, you know, over the last six years. Now, he did not vote for any of those because at the time that that came out, um, he didn't have the votes on the council. So he has shown a lot of support over the last six years in raising property taxes. I would like to also mention that in reality here, if we could get, uh, many of the people who shop RC Willys in Riverdale or other places come back here and buy their stuff at this store here, it would bring in a lot more sales taxes than help us out. So there are a lot of things that are happening that would actually, uh, increase our sales tax. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, your rebuttal.
Thank you. I, I do want to respond to the property taxes. In 2009, my second year on the council, the staff, as they prepared the budget, said we need a property tax increase. Uh, we worked throughout that tax season to try to avoid that. We, in the end, it was a four to one vote against raising property taxes. I was the one before that voted against it, so I don't know how, how can be said that I supported taxes. In 2011, again, the budget that came from the staff proposed a tax increase, we actually worked as a team of staff and, and city council mayor to avoid everybody bringing that to a vote and to work through the budget so that, that wouldn't happen. And as I said before, I have no plans and no intention of raising property taxes again.
Thank you both. Our next question, Mr. Peterson, you'll, you'll fill us with first, then Mr. Palmer. Ironically, it's about taxes. In the past, the city has either raised taxes or raised or instituted fees to increase city revenues. Have you supported increase or new fees and would you favor raising taxes or raising fees or creating new fees if the city revenue needed to increase in the future?
Alright, I talked a little bit about, I've talked a lot about taxes and my stance there, so I won't be that, but, but I will say that, uh, city taxes have been raised once, that I know of, in the past twenty to thirty years, and that was, would have been about 2006, right before I came on the council. And they have been raised since. Fees, fees are another story. To me, uh, fees are what we pay for our utilities. You get a utility bill every, every month. You pay out there for water, you pay for sewer, you pay for garbage. These are, this is kind of like paying for your electricity or your gas. You pay for what you use. Those things go up over time. If we're to be really responsible, we need to look at that every single year. And sometimes, it might be lucky that those fees will go down, most likely they will go up. So this year, our staff, our wonderful finance manager presented us with a review of these fees that had not been changed for about three years and said, we are behind, we are, I feel like this is irresponsible. I agreed with him, that it was irresponsible to be behind and then to one day, be behind the eight ball and have to bond to fix our, our water lines or to fix our sewer lines. And so, I have supported throughout this last budget season, a gradual raise of those fees. What was proposed was over seven dollars and that's hard to swallow per month. But what, what was quickly followed up as a proposal, or I supported, was spreading that out over three years because we want to be responsible. I don't want to bond or borrow money someday to fix your water pipes and your sewer pipes. We want to pay for those services that we use. That's my opinion on, on fees. And so, um, in the end, that did not pass and one of your fees went up fifty-five cents, one went down fifty-five cents for a net of zero on your own utility bill. But in the future, we need to be responsible for those fees and what they're used for. Thanks.
Mr. Palmer?
When it comes to fees, personally, I would prefer paying higher taxes than fees because I can write off the taxes on my income taxes. But in this situation here where they were talking about fees on their, on our utility bills, it actually was nine dollars and forty cents a day you wanted to increase but was recommended. That's a lot to swallow. I have a lot to swallow. I did present before the city council that I could accept an increase in our, in our fee structure as long as we were able to reduce our property taxes proportionally, especially since the city is at twenty percent, which is good, twenty percent in our, in our slush fund. If we get over twenty-five percent, then they're telling us we gotta spend. And earlier in the year, we got to the point where it was eighteen percent and they decided to kick out a hundred and fifty thousand dollar raise to the city employees. So we don't want to get to that out of proportion where we force ourselves to do things, uh, that we're not ready to do. So I was against the nine dollars and forty cents, especially since we had slush in our slush fund. And I think that we should keep ourselves to where we're not building the city and the citizens too much. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, your one minute rebuttal.
Yeah. The amount is in front of me, it was seven dollars and seventy cents as a proposal and spreading that over three years, we're split that up. I do want to address that I, I feel like there's an important difference between taxes and fees. And as I said before, fees, I believe are meant to pay for what we individually use in our household, your water, your garbage, and so forth. Taxes, um, should not cover those costs, in my opinion. Taxes should cover police, fire, parks, roads, and those kind of things that everybody either uses or benefits from. But those other things that are utilities need to remain separate. And so, I'm not in favor of rubbing Peter and Pay Paul, so to speak, taking money from the, the property taxes to cover fees.
Mr. Palmer, your rebuttal.
Yeah. What's interesting is, uh, prior to the last two years, we have really not spent very much money on our roads. All of once in the last two years, we spent seven million dollars on our roads. We were struggling with not having that money in our slush fund. And, uh, I say, where did we come up with all of this money, this seven million dollars? It wasn't grants or anything like that? We pulled it out of impact bonds. That's exactly what he's talking about, impact fees. We can use that for the infrastructure and so forth. That's what we did. Six million dollars out of that seven million came out of our impact fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question to Mr. Palmer and then Mr. Peterson. In the past few years, Syracuse City has replaced nearly all of the department heads and many other staff, employee, staff members. Why do so many Syracuse employees quit or left during the past few years? Is there something needs to be done to keep the staff engaged? Mr. Palmer?
Well, that has been one of my big concerns in the city. Especially when we see employees that have been here for fourteen, sixteen years, to see T. Merrill leave, to see Troy Moise leave, Ken Anderson, I mean, we've had some, some great citizens here and great employees leave. I would say that there's an awful lot of controversy going on within the city or possibly even a mayor conflict. In reality, I would, I would struggle in this city and working there. I don't believe that the people are leaving because of low wages. The wages are actually very, very good in the city. I think it is important though, that we look at, at the citizens and at our staff, recognizing that they are both, they are all important in this city. We do represent the citizens, yet at the same time, the staff is very, very, very important. I have noticed that our, our heads of departments, we probably only have three years at the most of any one of the heads of the department. And, uh, so we don't have the experience that we really need in the city. I would hope that I can bring stability to the city, not just, um, in council and mayor, but also within, within the city staff. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
We, we have employees that leave for different reasons. Some do leave for money. For example, our lowest paid police officers leave because we are about three dollars less an hour than neighboring cities will pay them. Department heads are the ones that also concern us, and they, they're the ones that are a little bit more, uh, kind of out, they're out the front, visual, and they, they have the turnover of those folks. And there's different reasons. Some, such as Ken Anderson, who Mr. Palmer mentioned, he left for a better job. Our city manager, Mr. Rice, left to go to a better job, that, in these people's opinions, we hear better. It's not really about money for most of the department heads. We do pay them on par or close to that, as far as the rest of the cities around us go. The commonality, if you talk to, to these people who leave, uh, will say that part of the reason they left is because of the discord and lack of respect amongst some members of the council. And I will tell you that I, I believe that I have the respect of almost all, if not all of the city employees. I'm the only city council member who regularly goes into their offices and calls their phones and researches what they're, what they're doing and goes on, I, I go on ride longs, I occasionally go onto the trainings that the firemen do, I sit down in the office of the recreation director and talk to her. And so, they want that respect. As a public employee myself, I want that respect from the principal and my superintendent. And I don't think our employees feel like they get that from all of the government body. And I think that is one of the big reasons, at least the commonality, of why they're all leaving. We want to retain our employees. I would love to see employees stay here for twenty, thirty years for entire careers because I think in so many ways it's a benefit to us as city council and as citizens.
Mr. Palmer, your one minute rebuttal.
I agree that, uh, Councilman Peterson has done an excellent job in working with the staff and he has gone out of his way to, uh, be with them, to help them, garnered questions from them. Here about, uh, maybe eight, ten months ago, it was brought up by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, uh, put out as, as a payment increase or payroll increase. I stood up before the council and I recommended that, instead of just giving three percent across the board, why not take a look at each employee that is not being paid enough? Take a look at that. And I even mentioned police officers, that they really should get a better raise and some of them are only making around thirty-five thousand dollars. That's pretty sad. If they didn't do that, they gave ahead to the departments the biggest raises. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, your one minute rebuttal.
Yeah. Money isn't everything to employees, but it is part of the overall package of why we, why, how we get them to stay here. Our employees have not received a raise, most of them for at least three years, some of them for five years, when we were able to approve a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, it's incorrect to say that the pub, that the police officer did not get anything. They actually did, those lower paid police officers did get some money, not only from the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but also from some money we allocated when our previous police chief retired and he was making so much money over the bulk of what our new police chief was hired on as. We were able to pay those police officers. Now, am I saying this perfect? No. But our employees deserve, um, some monetary reenactment. They don't have to be rich, but, but that pack, part of the package is important.
Thank you. Our next question starts with Mr. Peterson and Mr. Palmer. Are you supportive of metering secondary water in Syracuse?
I don't know yet. And I'll tell you, and I know that I already said that I am, but let me tell you the history behind this. As you all know, this year has been a bad one for water and the water companies who sell us our water, and we run our own secondary water system, we're very unique in that way. But the water companies that sell us our water both came to us and said, um, we need to conserve. Where one of the water companies, um, we were based water is putting, putting meters on all of their secondary connections. It makes sense to me. It makes sense to me that we should, that we would be able to pay for what we use. It makes sense to me as a conservation measure that people would, would be more careful, just like we are with our electricity and our gas and our culinary water. However, uh, and I expressed that support, I expressed the support that I wanted to look into it for. There was an appetite on the breath for the rest of the council to do that and it kind of died and it hasn't been brought again. So, have I voted for that? No. Do I support it? I don't know yet. Do I support looking into it? Absolutely I did.
Mr. Palmer?
For me, I look at the individual. I believe that the most important thing is that we should trust- I believe that the most important thing is that we should trust our citizens. We should work with them. This year happens to be a year that was, was a tough year. And so, the canals said that we're only going to give you seventy-five percent of what you're used to getting. So, the council recommended that we notify the citizens and make some recommendations. And interesting enough is, we have water in our system, the full time. We were able to stay under that seventy-five percent. The citizens did their job on it this year. It's interesting that some people look at water and utilities as a cash account. But when it comes to secondary water, the Utah Council for Cities and Towns has said that for secondary water, metering is the cash register. This is where the city can make the most money. You know, it's not all about money. It is about freedom, it's about our abilities to decipher our spells. Now, when the city puts some restrictions on it, I, I think there's three steps on this. First of all, you put a restriction and say, cut it back two times a week, thirty minutes per station. We did that this year, it worked. The next step is if it's not working, then you take a look at putting an ordinance in and make an ending where they could actually be fined. The last step would be to meter the water. I think it's very interesting that it would cost us a million, two hundred thousand, or at least a million dollars to put the meters on. Who pays for that? We do. We as citizens, we would pay for all of that. I would say, not only that, is that all of your bills would go up seven to ten bucks a month in utilities, just to pay for the meters and the increase in, in the secondary water and how they calculated it. Would it be ten thousand gallons a month that you get? Or would it be twenty thousand, but anything over that? People have big yards, people have acres, people have half acres. And then there's people who have eight to five hundred square foot. So, I would say, let's not meter.
Mr. Peterson, your own rebuttal?
Yeah. Paying for it. There were some numbers thrown out there that I don't believe are accurate. The reason why I don't think they are is because we've never been told exactly what it would cost. There was a number of six hundred thousand as a guess thrown out by our, our city employees, our staff. But we don't know, and there, and we haven't even looked into, to how to pay for it, if we want to do it, if it would really save money or save water. We haven't had a chance to look into those things, and I believe that's the council's responsibility to look into ways to save money. I would not do this if it was going to raise our fees. But there are other ways to do it. For example, Councilwoman Listenby just reported last night that she had been to a presentation at the utility cities and towns convention, where people talked about how there was a company that could do those meters for us and, and with what we saved over time, be able to repay them. So, there are other things to look at, but right now, we're not even looking at it, and I think that's a shame.
Mr. Palmer, your own rebuttal?
I've been told that, that we've looked into radio monitoring our regular water system, and that that would cost six hundred thousand bucks. We have two people, people checking the waters, the water meters, that's costing us about thirty thousand dollars a year. So, there is one expense that we've actually looked at and that we were thinking about doing. It would be sad, you know, to have that six hundred thousand dollars. And I've also been told that, actually, I think two hundred thousand is about what it would cost to put the meters on our secondary water. I can tell you this, as I've been throughout the city, they do not want their water metered. They have paid for the connections, and they're very satisfied with the way that we're handling it right now. And I also believe that we will have plenty of water throughout the time as that, as we build them out throughout the city because of the farmers' irrigation water.
Thank you, both of you. We've reached a part of the program where I'm going to give you guys my voice and punch, so you guys know, I have one question left. Or we've also reached a part where you can question each other. Which would you prefer to do?
I'm okay with one for you.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. The, the question is, has your campaign accepted funds, materials, or guidance from any person or organization which has already or will likely seek city council approval for a project? Are you willing to inform us who donated funds, who has donated funds to your current campaign? Start with Mr. Palmer and then Mr. Peterson.
All of my funds have come from individuals who either live within the city or, one lady worked within the city, and she gave me ten bucks. I can tell you this, that I did receive some funds from Ray Zong, and he did petition after that for a subdivision, a ten-acre subdivision. So, all of my monies all come from citizens and then I'm moving outside of the city.
Mr. Peterson?
And the simple answer is that I have not received money from organizations that will seek to develop or build or, or buy or, or anything within the city. I can tell you this, though, that even taking from friends and neighbors and family can sometimes pose conflicts. I have two people that don't like me anymore because I would not pull strings, I guess it, it is a good way to put it, to give exceptions to ordinances for them, because they had supported me previously, and I couldn't or wouldn't help them. And so, any money you take has the potential for that, but, but that's, that's what I, what I'm taking. I'm not taking money from anything that would look shady.
Mr. Palmer, is I your rebuttal?
Have you rebuttled that? I mean, to me, you know, I mean, those are facts, so.
Mr. Peterson?
No rebuttal. I just, I will say that the, the question about money is not something that candidates try to hide. In fact, we have to record that, keep track of it, who gives money and how much, and then we have to turn that in, and it becomes public knowledge.
Thank you, both of you. Now, closing statements. Since Mr. Palmer started with the opening statements, one by Mr. Peterson, two, two start with the closing statements.
Yeah, I, I mentioned the word vision in my opening statement, and it's something that I've, that I've had to, to develop and to sell to others as, as an educator. It's no different as a mayor. I'll tell you just, just some short points about what has evolved in my, in my vision as a mayor. The first thing, and this comes from, from as I talk to residents, the most common thing they ask me or talk to me about lately has been, how are you going to get everybody to feel long? And so, my first thing is to build a strong team. Not that agrees all the time, but that is the council, the mayor, the staff, and the citizens working together, listening to each other. Part of the way I do that is because I'm not one who, who lets things stick to me. I don't take things personally. I don't have a personal agenda. I can listen to others, say my piece, and move on. Public safety is another piece of my vision. I think that those are some of the most important services our city offers, and we need to make sure we have the best police and the best fire. Our employees, we've talked a little bit about them, we need to give them the tools to do their job, we need to retain them, and we need to show them respect. Infrastructure, we've talked about as well. These are the things, the roads and the things under the roads that people expect their city to take care of. And it costs us less to take care of them now than to replace them later. Economic development, we need to have a tax basis, we've talked about. We need to have jobs here, we need to have businesses that people can go to and that can be a healthy and good part of our community. Water conservation, we've talked about, that's another part of my vision. And something we haven't talked about that's very important to me is recreation, parks, and trails. If we want to live in a healthy community, those are things that we need to have, and we need to continue to, to work toward making those the best. That's my vision, and I hope you'll go for that vision. And then, Mr. Peterson, thanks.
Mr. Palmer, your closing statement?
So, I have set my plans at January fifth, right after I was sworn in as mayor. I plan on sitting down with the city heads of departments and also with our interim manager. We'll sit down and take a look at five-year, ten-year, fifteen-year plan. I'm one of those type of peoples that I do not micromanage, I macro. I take a look at the strengths that each one of the heads of the department have and allow them the ability to run their departments. There are some qualities that I have learned over the years as only going business. Some of those qualities are the fact that I'm a good decision-maker. I have the ability to make a decision and stick to it. I have the ability to work with people, I have the ability to hire and lay off. I know how to, to expect people to do their job. And so, not wanting to do their job, I'm, I have the ability to let them go. I'm also a finisher. I, I look at finishing the job. I hate seeing the job not finished, it's just sitting there. And so, when I go after something, I finish it. I'm also very good as a person in action. I find myself over all of these years, over thirty-one years of running the whole business, I don't think I've worked very many days, less than fourteen hours a day. I put that kind of effort into everything that I do. And more importantly, I think I have a proper ideology. I believe in the constitution, I support the constitution, I hold the constitution, and I believe in the individual and their freedoms.
Thank you, both of you. I appreciate your time. We'll invite you to come sit down with the audience and invite the city council candidates, if they would please, and take their place and sit down. Okay, thank you, everyone. This is now the city council candidates. And we'll start with opening statements, we'll start from, from left to right, and then we'll do closing statements, we'll do opposite. So, Mr. Duncan, you know, what's the first? Two minutes?
From your left.
Yes, well, we'll start with Mr. Duncan, we're going in alphabetical order, counting down, how about that?
Um, you know, here's my opening statement. I was a politician, and I'm a politics of the city's assist, and shortly after I moved here, in fact, one of my good friends showed up on my doorstep a few weeks after I moved here, and, and, and said, we've got an issue over here across the street, and ever since then, I've been involved as a citizen. I became involved in that, and eventually got appointed to the Syracuse City Council. I'll tell you, I've been out campaigning, and I think one of the things that has been very enjoyable, I've been doing out in campaign throughout, what I've been doing is I've been on the city council, I've been speaking my mind, I've been speaking what I believe in. And you know, it's pretty easy to get support from people in this town when you're conservative, when you believe in limited government, when you believe in not raising taxes. I don't have to say anything that's not true about my campaign. I don't have to tell people something I don't believe in. I really, really believe, I've been told more and more, more times than not, that all I do is represent a small minority in this city that likes to speak loudly. I've now been on the, out on the campaign trail, one of the last night news for you both, I represent a quiet majority in the city. I'm conservative, I believe in limited government, I believe in no taxes, and it's been a thrill to serve the city, and I really believe I'm serving your interests, and I live for you
Thank you. I'd like to thank the youth group that's here. I have a sauce on my heart for my people. That's more belonging, that's true. I'd like to tell you a story that comes from a musical about young people. In, in King Arthur's day, at the end of his life in France, he found himself what they stole away, a young man by the name of Tom L'Or. And he asked Tom why he could come to France to fight in this final battle, and, and Tom turned to him and says, well, it's because of the stories people tell. King Arthur asked him about if his mother had ever been protected by an eye, or if the round table had ever been anything of any value to him, and he said, no, it was just the stories that people tell. I'm running for city council, I served on the city council in the late eighties and the early nineties, I know about city government, been there. I'm here because I'm concerned about the story we're writing and the story people, the stories that people will tell about this community when the day is done. I'm not so sure I'm so different than most that are involved here, I think we'll generally end up in the same place of what we ought to do. But I'm not so sure about the path we take. I'm concerned about what that says about us as a community. Therefore, I am here to be a voice for civility, a voice for, not dialogue, I love dialogue, but that we do it in a way that's civil and that we can look at each other and be friends.
Mr. Palmer?
Hi, this is Alan Murray, I'm running for city council. I've lived in the city for over five years, almost six years, and my wife and children live amongst you, and as I've sat and watched our city council work with the mayor, I had some concerns and felt that necessary for me to stop the fighting and get involved. I truly am a conservative, specifically a fiscal conservative. I believe that government is here for the people, and the people aren't here for the government. I believe, living the, the responsibilities that, and the freedoms that tend to be taken away from us by our government. I was born in a little town in Irish Montana, and I love the small town atmosphere that's here in Syracuse, and that's one of my, my goals, is to try and maintain that as, as much as possible. I served in the military for eight years and had an opportunity to defend our constitution, and I grew up with that. I've had opportunity to work in the JAG, on the deal side of the military, as leading specialists, and have the opportunity to work with different government agencies and other, other things that have, that tend to develop in the night of the kinds of military. Currently, I'm the director of safety at Century Refrigerates Trucking Company. I've had opportunity to serve on many acquisition teams, and I have about eighteen to nineteen years of experience in business. And so, with all those things, I feel it's important that we become very fiscal strong as a, as a, as a city, and that we're careful in how we spend our money and how we make that. I'm running for city council.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Randy Miller, and I'm a write-in candidate for city council. And I talked to one of my friends, and I told him that I didn't make it past the primary, and he said, congratulations. And, you know, in a lot of ways, there's probably something to that. You know, in two thousand and four, I had a ride on a C-130, a one-way trip to Iraq, and I was very nervous about that. And I sat across from the sergeant, who was very nervous about that. Now, this is a little nerve-wracking, and I got to ask myself, and a lot of people ask me too, why are you doing this? Why are you running as a write-in candidate? Well, I can tell you, I'm not doing it for the fun factor, I'm not doing it for fame or fortune, and I'm not doing it because I won't take no for an answer. It's really not about me. I'm in this to try to make an attempt to make politics in Syracuse more reasonable and to expand and diversify the voices on the council. I think that people have an opportunity, not just participate in the government, but to be the government, or a government of, by, and for the people, and in many ways, that's been stripped away and taken away. And I'd like to return it, have a more robust and public dialogue about the challenges that face us. A little early, but my signs are there, so you know how to spell my name, and I'm a write-in candidate for city council.
Mr. Cracker?
Thank you, very kind. Thanks for the charge, for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, thanks for the charge, for the opportunity. I'm pretty comfortable sitting up here since I've sat up here for the better part of four years on the planning commission. They gave me the opportunity to run many of the departments, not all of the departments, and loved working with all those people in the planning commission. You know, when I moved here, I came from Cottonwood Heights, and at the time, they were converting to a new city called Cottonwood Heights from the county, and they were going through a lot of the same trauma that Syracuse is experiencing right now with New Grove and also becoming a city. Coming, moving down to Syracuse, kind of prompted me, I've never run for a public office before, but I took the mayor's place when she won the mayor's position, and I was appointed to replace her on the planning commission, so it was an opportunity for me to donate my time and learn more about Syracuse. But more importantly, what we've got here is a situation where we have nine square miles out of an entire Wasatch front, over a million people live on the Wasatch front, twenty-three thousand live here in Syracuse. I think what you're looking for is somebody that's gonna be a good steward on the city council, it's a good steward for the general plan. And one of my, one of my signs, my signs say, "The search group's name is first," and I think if you develop your thoughts around your families, then a lot of the minutia that occurs on the city council or the planning commission or our city staff disappears because when you center your thoughts around your family, a lot of the outside influences and things that occur disappear, because when you focus on your family, you focus on love, you focus on what's best for your family, you focus by doing that what's best for Syracuse. We're a family-oriented city, there's no kidding about it. We don't need to think about what other cities think we should do or outside influences think we should do. We should do what the citizens...
Let me ask a favor from the timekeeper, maybe you switch to that table so they can see what you're here.
I can see you're smiling.
Okay, we'll start with the questions now. The first question will go to Mr. Duncan, and then it will just go down the line, Mr. Gailey, Mr. Labrie, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Craft, this question. The question is, are you supportive of metering secondary water?
Absolutely not. A little history behind what was on the secondary metering. Several years ago, we were changing more from an agrarian society into more of a southern type of a community, and many of the farmers, my analysis is a handshake, they were promised that if they would start making adjustments, the water resistance would come in, it would fractureize the pumps and the pipes, that we would never meter secondary water. And while this council technically is not obligated to that handshake, it was a wise decision that was made several years ago, and we don't need to change that. The ultimate reality is, is when these farmers went to develop the land or sold their land off to developers, what happens? The city required them to turn over water shares. The larger your law, the larger the land and the water shares you had to turn over. We paid for our water, we continue to pay for it. And so the idea, and you know, this concept of UAC, or the U+1000 towns, suggesting this as a cash register is, I think, exactly what's going on in metering secondary water. We can control the flow of water in time of drought at the gates or they can mount it before we even send it out to our residents. We have the ability to meter water in the city itself without limiting the individual citizens, at the cost of one point two million dollars, maybe even more, that's the estimate that I've heard. We're gonna pass that cost on to citizens, and when we pay those meters, do you think they're gonna tell us we didn't have our our utilities loaded back again? Our utilities will only increase, the control over our citizens will only increase. We've paid for the water once, through development, providing water shares, we don't need to pay for it again, we can trust our citizens to be responsible for the water, and we don't need another cash register in the city. And so I think it's just as simple as that. We we made a deal with farmers and with this community a long time ago, I think we should own that, I think it was a wise decision, I still think it's a wise decision, not to meter secondary water.
Mr. Gailey, your turn.
I was on the city council when we first began talking about secondary water, and secondary water was was just a gleam in our eyes, we really hadn't even made that move yet. The promise was made to the citizens of Syracuse that that water would not be metered, therefore I would not support any metering of secondary water. And I think there's reason not to, we have shown this summer that we can govern ourselves. I think I agree with the concept that if we can do it ourselves, and if the citizens of Syracuse are told and we know what we're dealing with, I think we're intelligent enough to realize that we can limit what we do. And when our own family, we have limited our watering to a third of what was last year, so no, I would not support metering of secondary water because of the promise that was made twenty-five years ago.
My mom was very grounded this year, and my wife really takes offense when she's unable to have the prettiest ones in the neighborhood. I I believe that that we should be allowed to govern ourselves, we should have the opportunity to be able to work together as a community for a for a common goal, and it was neat to watch this year as a city did that. And I'm very impressed that we came together as a city and we're able to govern ourselves, take care of what needs to be done, to be able to make sure that we all have the ability to share and have things that we need to have the water there for the year. I'm not one for thinking that the cost is gonna be nothing, that there must be a, and that's zero, on what it's gonna take for us to be able to get metered. And so no, I will not support metering of our secondary water.
Yes, thank you. I read one newspaper report that claimed that our water use in August was down five percent over the period a year before. Well, I thought the target was to reduce consumption a lot more than that. I think the honor system is an ineffective policy, and how we implement it, I don't know, but I would support metering. I think it's essential to make progress, water is not a limited resource, and it's only gonna get more and more limited as these cities and counties continue to grow. And I think we do need to figure out a way how to reasonably meter our water use.
In Cottonwood Heights, they implemented metering, and it was a, it was a travesty. The projected cost overruns were enormous, the implementation was chaos. The result was, they're big on meter, but the costs of the metering and the upkeep of the meters, which they never calculated into its cost, are just a travesty, it never worked out, the remote control systems fail all the time, so we never got anything out. What they don't talk about is when we're not using all the water, where does the water go? It dumps into the salt lake. Would we get credit for that? No, we don't. Can we recapture water from the lake? I think we can, the water coming out of certain land to salt lakes, into the salt lake is cleaner than the secondary water per day. There's some way that we should be able to tie back into that. But metering secondary water that we weren't paid for is a ridiculous assumption from a cost standpoint, because where are you, where are you saving money? You're not saving money, you might conserve water, but if you don't save money, it costs you money. Where is the savings if there isn't? And I don't think we need to pass that on to citizens of Syracuse. I don't support it.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Gailey, then Mr. Labrie, Mr. Miller, Mr. Craft, and Mr. Duncan. The question is, what are your feelings about higher density multifamily housing such as apartments or townhomes in Syracuse?
My feeling about that is that Syracuse in general has been a town that has left itself in a situation where we need to be kind of careful to own ourselves of a civil suits. I think that we need to be kind of careful, that we don't deny that opportunity, but I think we do need to control it. So I would, I I think our policy has been, has worked generally. In fact, I'm going to probably open a can of worms, I'm gonna say to those people who have petitions so heavily with an integrity rule, it's because of your actions that we don't have a large apartment complex, and I'm grateful for that, and I sustain that. And I think the regular workings of the city have precluded that for us. In general, I don't support heavy apartment buildings, but townhomes and high-end push places for all cities in Syracuse.
Mr. Labrie?
We have high-density housing here already, a lot of the retirement communities. I came to the city council meeting yesterday, and the councilwoman, Elizabeth, went to a meeting where there were some statistics given as to what age group is going to increase at what rate over the next few years, and the elderly came up with like a hundred and twenty percent, is that right? The elderly was gonna increase about a hundred and twenty percent.
Yeah, right, a hundred and seventy, a hundred and twenty, yeah.
I've got a man who lives in high-density housing here in Syracuse, and a lot of my friends live over here in Walker State, and I think that we need to really take a look at what our plan is as a city and what types of demographics we're gonna have here and make plans for that. I'm completely against large, huge apartment complexes. One of the reasons that I moved here to Syracuse is because of the town, a small-town, country type feel of the neighborhood and of the city, and so I am very supportive of that.
Yes, thank you. I think, yes, the city does need to be careful to not take a toll or a position that would appear to be discriminatory to people based on their economic position in life. An effective, successful city has work and housing opportunities for all kinds of people. I addressed this a month ago when we met last. My kids and grandkids are gonna have a place to live someday, and they are not gonna just magically turn twenty-three or four or five and have enough money to live in three thousand square foot houses in Syracuse. We need to have adequate housing and employment opportunities for many kinds of people to make our city grow and thrive and to be a great population, otherwise, you know, your kids are gonna move off to some faraway place that will accommodate them. And, you know, additionally, the proximity of housing to employment almost affects people's lives and will enrich people if we can have suitably planned employment and housing opportunities so they don't spend a tremendous amount of their money committing long businesses to a job that doesn't pay that rate. That's my two cents, thanks.
Mr. Craft?
Look, Syracuse City already allows high-density housing, it's already here, it's pre-provisioned, we have PRD that allows eight units per acre, Scoper Gardens is allowed to have up to twelve units per acre, which is being currently built, that's the type of density that we're allowing right now. We also allow in our one cluster subdivision system where with adequate open space, properties can be grouped together in a cluster with an adequate open space. Walker, Walker Estates is a good example, the development behind Smiths, that's all high-density housing. What we're talking about is the misunderstanding what high-density housing is all about. We're talking about high-density housing availability, it's not we're talking about things that are two, three stories high, which we'll talk about here in a second, the integrity, are post-six-hundred units around the high school and the other apartment buildings. And they were going to be a buffer to the industrial park that they proposed. So the fact that we don't have high-density housing is a misandore in Syracuse, we have plenty of it. The low-income housing market is here, we're actually doing an inventory right now, the city staff does, and it's to accommodate the state requirement to regulate how much moderate income housing, and that's based on what is going on in the county, not what's in the city. I think people misunderstand what we're talking about, low-income housing versus moderate income housing. State law requires moderate income housing be available. And we have that on the planner, our last finding show that we had plenty of it, and we haven't reduced any of that since that time. So I, as far as high-density, I'm against what I consider high-density. We described that and defined that at the planning commission, and we have adequate high-density housing available, availability to any developer that comes to Syracuse, and they're more than welcome here. We are a good place to be there, we're a single housing community, we've got plenty of employment opportunities. When I talked to Smiths the other day, they employ over a hundred and twenty-five people in that store, and I asked the manager, "How many people live in Syracuse?" "Five or six." We're the second highest income per capita in the state of Utah. People live here and drive to a high-income position, where they are here.
I've got a couple of things about this issue of high-density housing. First of all, since I've been on the council, we've had folks within the city who have their own opinion about that, and most disturbingly, we've had a lot of people come in from outside the city, and do presentations for the council and the citizens, and say, "This is what's going on, going on on and down the Wasatch front." Get with the program. Last time I checked, you elected your Syracuse city council to represent what you wanted in Syracuse, not what the Wasatch front twenty-fourty wants. We don't have to be like every other town. That's what's wonderful about communities, we get to choose who we're going to be. So I think this, this concept that we have to have so much industrial, so much commercial, so much high-density housing is not true. We shouldn't be allowing people outside of our community to dictate that policy, and that's been going on for years and it needs to stop. The city council, the planning commission needs to stand up and say, "Listen, our citizens don't want that." But more importantly, why don't our citizens want that? I wanna go back to the idea that we started nearly sixty years ago with the general plan in our city, and that general plan has been consistent over the years, that general plan is a guideline for the way that we want our city to build out. Most of the citizens that I talk to, either at city council meetings or in chance meetings or rally and campaign conferences, "Do you know why we moved out here? Because it has a real sense of community, that family we're talking about, that Mr. Craft was talking about. Because we have primary, single-family residential housing, we're a good new community." And yet we have outside influences saying, "No, you cannot change that." Here's the reality, the reason why we have primary, single-family residential housing is because we have a general plan that says exactly that. You didn't move here, and it wasn't an accident that it was that way when you moved here, and it won't be an accident that's still that way ten years from now, and you still wanna live here if we'll respect the fact that we've been planning the city for sixty years, and we shouldn't take on the attitude that something's gotta change. It doesn't have to. Syracuse is a great town, it has a great feel to it, it has a great opportunity for people to raise their families in a safe environment, and we need to keep that. High-density housing, we have some. We don't need a ton of high-density housing in our city, it's not necessary, it's not in our general plan, and it's not why people moved here. I don't, I didn't always get to live in a nice community, I fought my way to get through school, I lived in a eleven-hundred-square-foot home with four children. We all make sacrifices to get where we want to go, and we don't have to insist that we get to live where we want to live, we worked towards our dreams, and that's what Syracuse is about, it's a trade to live here, let's not lose that.
Thank you, Labrie. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Labrie, then Mr. Miller, then Mr. Craft, Mr. Duncan, and Mr. Gailey. In the past, the cities either raised taxes or raised or instituted fees to increase city revenues. Have you supported the increase or new fees, and would you, in the future, would you favor raising taxes or raising or creating new fees if the city needed to increase revenue, and why or why not? Mr. Labrie?
One of the other meet the candidate nights, there were probably four probably women that sat in front row, and we were talking about the increase in sewer fee, and one of the comments that came from them was that they're on fixed income, and they had a very difficult time in being able to accommodate an increase like that. I think the increase at the time was over nine dollars, that was originally proposed, it was brought down to a little over seven, and then finally it was a fifty-five cent to eighty-five cent increase and decrease that came out to a net zero. I'm not in support of just raising taxes, to raise tax, and I think that we need to be fiscally conservative in the way that we handle our, our business here in Syracuse. Having them serve on an acquisition team multiple times, and gone in and taught these companies that were not fiscally sound, they didn't pay attention to legal details, they didn't look for ways to save money, and gave us opportunities as a company to come in and purchase them. And so that's, that's what my goal would be here at the city, would be to... And so that's what my goal would be here at the city would be to take a look at everything that we've done, what we're doing currently and what we can do to be able to bring Syracuse together. We know that we grow. We've increased our staff. Do we need to increase our staff? I don't think that we need to decrease the staff by any means, but we need to take a look at ways that we can get people together and make sure that they're working together, cross-training, help others to understand what needs to be done to save money instead of being able to raise taxes.
Mr. Miller?
So the average homeowner that lives in a subdivision here in Syracuse, I heard this said not too long ago that Syracuse built roads, that's actually not true. When you bought your lot, the developer paid for the installation of asphalt, subgrade, sewer, water, and even taking on the chin, that was part of your lock price. And the city has a legal and moral obligation to keep the roads up to date. I think you ask a lot of people, when you look at a lot of the roads in Syracuse, it's pretty clear that in many ways the city is defaulting on its moral obligation and its municipal services to take care of roads in particular. So I do think, not necessarily that we should raise taxes, but I think it's a warranted discussion. And if there's a fear that we can't do that and then not go back, I think it warrants a bigger discussion about the power of the people within our own government to do what needs to be done and what it needs to be done. And one other thing about that, many of our roads are in great need of repair. And I think people who pay their property taxes year in and year out and see their roads not fixed have a great case for injury. And also, the longer we let the roads deteriorate and other infrastructure, it gets more expensive to fix it. So what's the real tax raising? Do we continue to neglect our assets and pay a nice, massive higher price later? If you have a homeowner that knows he has termites, had better jump on the problem right away or it's going to get extremely expensive to fix. So I think, and this applies generally to my view of politics, I think the citizens are entitled to a polite, civil, reasonable discussion about how is exactly we're going to face the challenges that face our city.
Mr. Pratt?
Well, this is a bigger issue than the two members allow, but let's talk about the city debt. When we pay off the city debt, that, like the next one that's coming up, is a million dollars that we're paying off. And when we pay that off, where does the money go? Typically, it ends up being spent somewhere else without relieving the people that paid for the bond in the first place. And I think that's where money can come from, from right off the bat. The city is not wanting for money. They've increased their rainy day from 5% to over 20%. Out of that fund, they gave away $140,000 to city employees, of which 40% went to director heads, which is really not the way it should have been. And the city council, they recognize that, actually took some of that money back from a couple of the department heads. Taxes, fees and debt, how do you pay for things? You have to pay for things as they come up. And I always use the example of tires in your car. You go down to buy a brand, you set a tire and they say they're supposed to last 40,000 to 70,000 miles. Well, you drive down the street, five thousand miles later, you hit a curb or a chunk of concrete corroded and blow the tire out. Well, you've been setting mendicide to replace that tire based on its longevity of 30,000, 40,000 miles. Well, now you've only got 5,000 miles and then how do you pay for that? Well, you've got to find the money somewhere because you can't drive your car around with three tires. Just as he's saying, I say, you know, when things break, you've got to fix them. And if things are broken, are you just going to let them sit there and be broken? No, you've got to fix them. So there's got to be some buffer money in the city for those kinds of things. I think the schedules that we're looking at down the road, as far as amortization needs to be looked at, I think there's savings that can be made in the city. I've voiced those in the past. I think, as I mentioned, there's plenty of money coming into the city and we've gone through tough times. And we've actually increased the amount of money in the city by reducing the number of employees and through attrition and through economics through the different departments. They've really done a good job in that respect and I applaud the director heads for doing that. So as far as taxes and fees, what's the difference other than you can write one off on your income tax and the other one you can't? The other one requires public comment, the other one can be tied to inflation. So I think from the standpoint of being upfront and that we need to raise taxes.
It does take longer than two minutes, doesn't it, Galey? You know, it's interesting. I've often heard this saying, I like this saying, I've used it before. Oftentimes, the money issues aren't about cash flow, it's about the way we spend it. And so many times, we solve a problem by asking for more money instead of asking the question, how are we spending it? Let me give you an example. I haven't been in the city very long, but a couple of years ago, when there was a discussion of raising our property taxes by 20%, I believe it was the number, I came out against that. And I said, well, we need to do that. And I've been consistent with that, saying, here's the funny thing, guess what? The citizens rose up and they said, we don't want that. And they put a referendum to go out and vote and guess what? The citizens voted it down. We haven't raised taxes in the last two years when we were desperate, we need to raise taxes 20%. And we've got 20% in our general fund right now. We spent $7 billion on infrastructure last year. We're spending over a million dollars on realtors this year and we desperately needed to the tax increases two years ago. Now, let me give you another example. We were talking about raising utility rates this summer in the city council and there was discussion, $9.4 cents. I came out adamantly opposed to raising the amount of the funds until we looked at two things. We looked at the possibility of saving other places in the city and offsetting the increase in utilities by decreasing property taxes. Also taking a look at the fact that we have bonds that are paying off right now, as Mr. Pratt talked about, that are coming new that will have to pay off. And I was told that meaning by the member of the city council, that we need to do something about utilities now and save them for the future. But then when the discussion came up about bonding and paying off the bonds and having that money, I was told, knowing how much money is going to be coming to us when those bonds are paid off, it's too speculative. When you have a credit card and you can look at how much it's costing you every month to make your payments, when you look at the interest rates, you look at the cost, there's nothing speculating about wanting to get those paid off. There was a refusal by certain members of our council and our administration to even take a look at where we can get the money for our utilities in response. And so, yeah, I'm against raising taxes and I don't think it's necessary because we haven't taken a look. Two years now, we've been in crisis and we're doing better than we were two years ago. I just don't lie to waiting for those results.
Mr. Galey?
Your turn.
Fundamentally, I believe that utilities should be self-funded. I believe that we should band together as a community and we should plan for the future. We should not legally apply to future generations. And since we have some control over utilities on how much we're spending on conservation, those kinds of things, I don't think the general fund should ever be used for utilities. We should do that together. I don't think there should be a taxidermy center. I don't think there's a need for that. I don't think it's been shown that there's a need for that. What I would hope that we would understand, I think the solution in Syracuse is a better and healthier business community. For four years now, I have worked with SBOSS and trying to increase that business community. Business community pays 100% of the value of its property and property factors for its residents, we pay only 55% of the assessed value of our property. Our local businesses need to be healthier and we need to support them. And supporting them will solve a lot of the physical problems that we have with money flow and will increase other businesses coming in. So no, I don't believe that the general fund should ever be used to offset utility yields. And I think utility yields should be self-funded. We've got to be smart enough that we collect enough to replace that. Our children and those future generations, we think they're going to save better than what we had here at all of them down by, but I guess it's, you can consider almost like a used tax, but we're using our general fund.
Thank you. This question will start with Mr. Miller, then Mr. Pratt, Mr. Duncan, then Mr. Galey, and then Mr. Lowery. In the past few years, Syracuse City has replaced nearly all the department heads and many of the staff members. Why have so many Syracuseian employees quit or left during the past few years? Is there something that needs to be done to keep the staff from leaving? Mr. Miller?
Why have they left? Well, I've talked to a number of them about it. It centers around mistreatment, mistrust. I think there's a climate of mistrust between the staff and the council. I think it can be fixed, it should be fixed. I think you can't go wrong by standing right by the people. I think a lot of things get taken too far in this city. It's too personal, it's too partisan. Partisanship is unenjoyable. A lot of people say, politics is unenjoyable. And if you look around tonight and see there's a lot of empty seats, well, why don't people enjoy it? It's the business of the city, it affects their lives. It really isn't politics that's unenjoyable or nasty, it's partisanship and this mistrust and suspicion all the time. You know, who's trying to get over on the city or, you know, what actor deals along? I'm not a fan of it, of the longer political parties. I'm against political parties that foment discord and distrust among people who ought to have affection for each other as fellow Americans and countrymen.
Mr. Pratt?
I'm going to speak personally on this subject because I was personally investigated by the mayor in her office and was taken into a private meeting and my background was questioned by the mayor and her staff, including the city manager and on the behest of a developer. And we all know who that developer is. So I have been personally attacked by the mayor, which is odd because I was one of her campaign managers and block captains and helped her get hired to the position she's in. I've been her family, I've been her home, I've worked with her husband and I've helped her good friends until I wouldn't understand through the planning commission some of the things that she had on her agenda. And the mayor's a good friend until she isn't. And when she turns on you, then she uses her staff and her bully call, but in the standard examiner or in other news media to intimidate. And I saw that firsthand in the planning commission because last Thanksgiving, we lost two planning commissioners that just finally stopped that up and all of it and quit. And so we had that huge turnover in the planning commissioners, two of us that said, we're going to stake it out. I was one of them. I said, I'm not going to be bullying her in by staff or by the mayor. And I staked it out until she would be appointed, which was unprecedented, unprecedented that was set in the city, that a city senior person that was appointed that wanted to be reappointed wasn't. Instead, eight people were looked at and six were interviewed, two that wouldn't understand her policy were not even considered. So that's the kind of stuff that's going on, whether it's being known to you or not. The fact is the fact. And I personally was affected by that. Now, when your wife's staff got run off, it's because they were intimidated, just like I was. And they quit not for money, it's just because they, when the mayor's being investigated, they want to be part of it. And that's the truth. And that's what's happened to this city. Over 12 people left. Some of the senior positions, some of the high paid jobs left because they were sick and tired of it. And can you blame them?
You know, people leave, it went for a lot of reasons. I've got to tell you all this in my life. When I worked for the government, the first few or five years of my career was across Kever and metro Atlanta area. And I'll tell you why I left. ACH wasn't very big. Remember that 1100 square foot home with four children? That's not why I left. As a factor. I left because right in my office, we didn't have leadership. We didn't have a mission. And we had general apathy in our office and I didn't want to be a part of that. You know, I get frustrated hearing over and over and over again that the city council is driving up employees in the city. It's a lie. It's not true. And I want to make very clear, there needs to be accountability and responsibility for leadership in the city. One of the reasons why I have supported Terry Palmer is because I think Terry Palmer brings that leadership. I think leadership starts at the top. One of the most important roles that we have in the city is the mayor who will stop pitting staff and the city council against each other. I appreciate staff. I've worked for the government. I get it. And we can't always give staff everything they want. And staff doesn't always give us everything that we want, but that's okay. It doesn't have to be World War III. So why do I think people left for a variety of reasons? But I think one of the big reasons why they left is, I have to fundamentally agree with Mr. Pratt, they've been driven off and not by the city council. And I think it's unfortunate. I know some of these people personally, they're fantastic people, they live in our community, some of them left our community. And that's got to change. And we need new leadership. And, you know, the president flies Congress all the time, the buck stops somewhere and if you can't keep stopping with the city council, we have not driven off staff. The responsibility applies somewhere else. And what can I say? Leadership, taking care of employees, paying them well, we need to pay them, I mean, we need to look at that. We're taking care of employees financially. I think the big reason is that pushing payable, and it is not on the state.
Mr. Galey?
I don't know that I really know. All I know is the past hurts and I need to learn from it and we need to make it better. And I would do better. I don't know the reason.
Mr. Lowery?
I think the more important question is what are we going to do to keep the current staff that we have? We have a wonderful staff. As I watch them work in many of the city council meetings, I can see that a lot of times they feel like they're not trusted. And I think that's a very important thing, when you're an employee or when you're working that you're trusted. These are individuals who have gone to school, they've been hired for a reason because of the abilities that they have. We need to listen to what they have said. We need to have foresight to allow them to go out and do their job, trust them, empower them, give them the opportunity to do what they need to, so they can come in with the fewest information that we need and work together with them. Everybody has that structure. I'm not saying that we just let people run willy-nilly by any means, but we do have to empower them and give them the opportunity to be able to manage themselves and manage departments that we trust and to be able to work.
Thank you to all of you. The next part of the agenda here is the time for the individual question. And what this will be is each of you up there will have an opportunity to ask a question of one other candidate. There are some rules in your ground rules, both of you have read them. There is some of the question criteria. Please try and combine one of those. You will have one minute to ask your question, two minutes to answer. If I feel like your question does not meet the question criteria, I will interrupt you. I'm not planning to be a moderator or interrupts or corrects or offers information on what your stand is, but if there's only three criteria that are on the back of your ground rules, if I feel like you're not meeting those criteria, if you violate one of those criteria, then I will interrupt you and ask you a different question. We will start with Mr. Pratt and then Mr. Duncan, Mr. Galey, then Mr. Lowery and Mr. Miller. Again, one minute to ask the question, two minutes to answer. Mr. Pratt?
My question is to Mr. Galey. On March 7th, you sent me an email with a resolution through SBOSS supporting Nittagre. At the time, Nittagre was proposing 600 apartments and rental apartments as a buffer to their industrial settlement request around the high school. At the time, you sent that, since that time, you in the candidate meetings have mentioned that you would like to update and make more current the general plan. In support of what you pretended is a resolution through SBOSS, is, are you of the opinion then or of mindset that when a developer comes in that we should change our general plan to accommodate them? Maybe I could respond to that so that there is not questions there. SBOSS is a local business league that was started about three and a half years
SPOS is a local business league that was started about three and a half years ago. What we are trying to do there is to try to encourage residents to stay home, to shop. Traditionally, we've always gone the east, and we don't have a cool of people who travel through Syracuse from the west, but by insurance, don't get around much. And so we don't have that. SPOS, back in March of 2012, looked at what Nynegre was proposing at that time, and in that proposal, if you were to read the whole proposal, what we proposed at that time was a business park, that we were in favor of a business park. We spoke nothing about apartments, we spoke nothing about anything else, but we thought a business park in Syracuse would bring jobs to Syracuse. If you think about it, which would you rather have leave Davis County, the Lake Hills Mall or Hillfield? Which would have the biggest impact on Syracuse? Well, obviously, it would be the employer. Without jobs, we can't shop, and we thought that business base in Syracuse would help the daytime population here and help local businesses. So in that resolution, we supported a business park. That was in March of 2012. Some of the feelings in that body have changed. That resolution was signed by local business people, not just by my daily, but I did support it.
Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, my question is to Randy Miller. When he decided to write a writing campaign, I believe I was a first one, I was a promoter, but you mentioned that people needed a different choice out there than what they had already chosen. Can you tell me?
Sure, sure. Yeah, I think we reached a record high voter turnout of 11%. That's hardly, can be construed as the voice of the people. You know, if it was a randomized sample, that would be one thing, but I do think there are a lot of people that support me, and it's not just the name Randy Miller, but it's the brand of we the people, of we the people getting to be equal participants in our city government. I think that's what they support, and that's why I've decided to file this as a writing candidacy, so the people that have a choice, I know some people will take it. Thank you.
My question is to Alan. Alan, you spent some time in the military. I wondered if you could expand upon that a little bit and talk about that experience in your life and how it has expanded your horizon and how that will affect your leadership here.
I've done a lot of service in my life, and I think that service is the most important thing. Serving the military was important, part of my life. My father served in the military, and I felt it was important for me to win the federal constitution. One of the responsibilities I have in the military was legal specialist in Jack, and with that, you have to go through schooling to learn what you can and can't do in the military, what you can't do, and what laws and rules apply, and how to enact those laws. With that, there's a lot of times that I had to be in situations where we sell a lot of soldiers off to war, specifically given the storm of the shield, where I was called out on a regular basis, almost every weekend, and sometimes over all weeks, to have to go and prepare units to be able to go to war. It's very heartening thing to do, to sit and have a mother and father sign their children away to someone else because they were loud enough to defend our constitution. But I gained from those that served, both in civil services and military. It prepared me also to do a lot of training with the soldiers in how to interact with each other. I think that's going to be a benefit for me here in this position is to be able to work together with different attitudes, different demographics, different individuals and their opinions, and be able to resolve any kinds of concerns and to help make our city a much more pleasant place to work, a pleasant place to be. And so I think that's just going to be a benefit.
Mr. Lowry, your turn for asking a question.
Can I change the rules? Can I ask my question for yes or no from all candidates?
If all the candidates are agreeable to answer yes or no, I'm agreeable to that.
Have you taken any money from anyone, anyone or any group that lives outside of Syracuse? My mom answered first and said, "No, I'm self-financing my campaign."
Okay. Mr. Miller, your turn.
Yes, well, I've done a fair amount of self-financing. I have taken money from outside the city. I remember you taught council of land surveyors, which represents land numbers of all kinds, and I took $500 from the, I don't remember their name, the Northern Water Stat Association member, and it's all gone out as a prior.
Thank you. Mr. Pratt?
All the money I spent came out of my wife's vacation fund. That's why she doesn't support me or she's not...
Mr. Duncan?
100% of my campaign's come from citizens in this city. Nothing else.
Mr. Gailey?
No, I have not accepted any money from anyone else besides my wife.
Her vacation fund also. Okay, Mr. Miller, you have the final question.
Okay, we're good. Well, let's see. Mr. Duncan, Mr. Pratt, I'll guess, I guess Pratt will direct this one to you. Is it essential to have high voter turnout, and how can we get voter turnout closer to 100% instead of languishing down around in single digits?
When I spoke to constituents and people that live in the city, a lot of them weren't right in there, and they don't understand what's going on here in Syracuse. Consider the city's doubled in size just in the last few years, there's a huge amount of apathy, they came from lots of other cities, and, you know, basically, they are leaning on what they did before. My own kids aren't even registered voters, they can't even vote for me. So when you consider registering people, educating them on how important this process is, when you consider, Dr. Peterson won his seat by one vote, Mayor won her position by 28 votes, every vote counts, and it's important that we help people understand that. And I think we, although we have the highest voter turnout among other cities, which is not anything good to say about the other cities, but we can do a lot better, and I agree that things like this are true, but look, who shows up? Nobody. I mean, nobody. But I look at all the empty seats, and we've had three of them now, and to me, they're partly intended. Like I say, I've never run for office before, so I'm pretty happy that I get a chance to talk to as many people as this at one time. So that, the internet, and my website, and things like that are a good way of putting it. We have the technology. I mean, when you look at, when the presidents and all their money runs a campaign, they get high voter turnout where they want it, and they get their seats selected based on that. Well, I agree with 100%. I think that's an utopian position, and it'd be great if we could ever get to that, but you look at Iraq where people love to vote, and they nearly got 100% of the people out because they opened their finger up with their hand. I've got to vote, and some people walked 10 miles or more to go to vote. And here we are, we drive by this to the city building to vote, and we came to people out. It's a concern for candidates, we'd like to see more people, we'd like, when we have public meetings like in the planning commission or the city council meeting, there's public events where you're invited to kind of voice your concerns about things that are going on in the city, and they're partly intended. So I don't know what to say about increasing that.
I apologize, Mr. Gailey, I can keep writing to your whole assignment.
Can I just take one second further? All the candidates have asked me to read a statement for the towers. Abraham Lee can express the need for leadership training in this way. He said, "The child is the person who's going to carry on what you have started, they're going to sit where you're sitting, and when you are gone, attend to those things which you think are most important. You can create all the policies you please, but how they are carried out depends on them. They will assume control in your cities, your states, and your nations. They're going to move in and take over your churches, schools, universities, and corporations to feed humanity to their hands." All the candidates wanted to thank and join with you for taking the time in your days to come in here and prepare and put this together. We're very impressed with the way that you guys act, and we look for positive and great things that will come out of your hours, and we just want to thank you for putting this together for us.
We'll now have closing statements. We'll start with Mr. Pratt, Mr. Miller, then Mr. Lowry, Mr. Gailey, Mr. Duncan. Closing statements are two minutes each. Please try and watch your time carefully. Thank you. She's cute enough. Thank you.
Hey, on my closing, and we've talked about a lot of subjects here tonight, but one that has really been a main concern for me the last few years is having a developer come in here and really beat this city up. They've sent their attorneys in, they've sent their lobbyists in, they've intimidated the planning commission, they've intimidated the city council, and all in support of a mayor who's supportive of them. And you have to understand why people leave and become disgruntled when they see the system breaking down and not working properly, to the point where, in my case, I personally witnessed where the planning commission was being, the information was being withheld. We also saw our information that we developed withheld from the city council, so they couldn't make any proper decisions, and we have people here that verify that. Having said that, I do have the resolution printed out that I spoke about to Mr. Gailey, and other than he points out that Nynegre North Business Park is part of the resolution, was not part of what Nynegre was proposing at the time, and Nynegre North Business Park was what didn't exist. So this is a made up name that they put in this resolution. What I'm saying is that, here's the email he sent me, here's my rebuttal, I said I didn't agree with it. The planning commission had a number of public hearings with that developer and told them if they would change the developer to fit the general plan, then we could work with them. They wanted us to change the general plan. We were ready to, we had public hearings, five of them, two, three of them with the developer, so we could understand what their position was. Their position was just be honored. If we beat them up long enough and be mean long enough to them, which they've done in other cities, by the way, they'll came in, we didn't, we lost two planning commissioners, two were reappointed. And so this resolution, I hate to say, is really something that SPOS should have never done, and I'm sorry to say that Mike Gailey is the drafter of it, and he can say what he wants, but that's really disappointing.
You're a little bit on the attacking side of the conversation.
I agree with that. My thing, I like Mike Gailey, I went on a trek with him for a week, and he's a surgeon there.
Mr. Miller, your turn.
Continue to go clockwise or whatever.
I'm just going backwards of the way we give the next statements.
It's late, you're tired, I haven't had dinner, I don't know, so I'll say, "Let's go home soon," and give you a little cowboy patrol trip. Partisanship is the curse of this great nation. It causes inner words of constipation. It also causes wounds to the head.
I really enjoyed the opportunity to be able to come in here and to be able to run for office. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to be able to serve each one of you, if you're going to listen and hear what your desires are for this city. I believe that my leadership experience over the last 20 years in business will benefit me in this position, giving the opportunity to listen, come to a conclusion, make a fair vote for you as citizens of this city. I love this city, I love this country, I love the constitution. I believe that, I believe in the form of government that's set up, you're right, and to the government that's set up here for this city, and I look forward to the opportunity to serve you. My name's Alan Lowry, I'm running for city council, please vote for me.
I once read a book called Crucial Conversations, and in that book it talked about the stories we tell. Remember, I started by saying, telling, reminding us about Tom Warwick, and he come to fight for the round table to visit the stories people told. We can be damaged by the stories we tell ourselves. Sometimes we see things, and we perceive things, and we look at things, and because we don't fully understand everything that is going on at that moment, we make a judgment. Sometimes those judgments are snap judgments, and we tell ourselves stories. Those stories make us feel a certain way, and when we feel a certain way, sometimes we can do things in our behavior which is not appropriate. What kinds of stories did Adolf Hitler tell himself about the Jewish population that allowed him to do the atrocities that he did? What kinds of things in his mind did he tell himself enough times that he began in his heart to act in a way which was inhumane? My counsel would be for all of us to be careful of the stories we tell ourselves, because they're only perceived truths, and they may not be altogether true. There may be things there that we misunderstand, and as Mellet, it's our responsibility to dig into those things until we fully understand. And Mike Gailey, I would love to serve this community again. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan, your turn. Before that, I want to thank all of you for participating tonight, all the city council candidates, plus the mayor candidates. I appreciate your time and all the answers you're giving. Thank you very much. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. You know, some people have told me, "Boy, you really need to sell your experience in the council, this experience matters." I think my experience matters for this reason, not because the best candidate is always the one that has the experience. In 1988, you elected Tom Redmond, thank heavens we picked the guy who had not had an argument with him for four years. But this is why experience matters, because for two years, those people have been paying attention and recognized that there's something about me. I am conservative. I have been consistent about low government regulation. I have spoken now that regulating our water supply anymore than we have to. I have spoken now people are against tax rates. I have talked about limited government, and I have talked about necessity to be responsible. Sometimes elections are about change. But change, the say the change is not invaluable, and we hear that all the time. I say what I mean, I mean what I say. The last few years, I've represented the city of Syracuse in very, very tough times. There had been real discontent in this city. I had ended up in the newspaper on more than occasion, not of my own choosing, and I don't think it's been fair either. And I look forward to working with the new mayor and the new city council. I look forward to the opportunity to have peaceful times. I also look forward to the opportunity to ride back here and continue to fight for conservative principles, continue to fight for the general plan in good harmony and peaceful neighborhood. Low taxes, low government intervention. So in my case, I think two years of experience has shown to apply, and I want you to vote for me. And I would ask you to vote for me if I'm in the city council.